Lead. We have enough board members at this time to open the meeting. All meetings are televised live and available on demand by Chelmsford Telemedia. Public input. Public input shall be limited to statements from the public relating to issues with the jurisdiction of the Chelmsford Zoning Board of Appeals that are not currently the subject of a pending public hearing before the Zoning Board of Appeals. Public comment on any pending public hearings shall only be heard during such public hearings and may be limited to three minutes' time. There's Danny, so that's wonderful. Our first public hearing is Five Morning Glory Circle. Nicholas Warrens is requesting a special permit under Section 195.9 E conformity for a 20% reduction in the front setback requirement of a 40-foot to build an 11.5-by-14-foot sunroom addition and other relief deemed necessary. This property is located in the residential RB district. Someone here representing Five Morning Glory tonight? Good evening. If I could get your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Tom Block with Morgan Exteriors, the contractor. We're representing the Warrens. Our address is 78 Leonardary Turnpike in Hooksett, New Hampshire.
Good evening. Like to give a little overview.
So basically, we're looking, again, the reason for the location and the sizes, obviously, to fit within the parameters for the 80%. The back of the property is pretty much all wetlands. If you look at that whole neighborhood, it's Hart Lake. It's all the wetlands running off of that, so we don't have to contend with the wetlands issues. As far as the build, you're looking at, this is all, this is a stick-built project that will blend right with the house aesthetically. It will match. It's not going to devalue any of the neighborhood whatsoever. Passes all energy codes as far as, actually, it's like 15% better than what it needs to be energy code-wise. I've never done one of these. I've done variances, so kind of don't know exactly what you're looking for. Pretty much, it's a straightforward project.
Yeah, I mean, the special permit is less onerous than the variance, so you should be in good shape.
Okay.
We just want to know what you were doing.
Yeah.
We have the man. I think it's more for the general public.
Includes the footings. I mean, the footings that we did, we use the precast cement, so that we don't have to do any...
Yeah, it's going to be on piers.
Yeah, but it's all the precast, so they just, basically, you could dig a trench, drop them in. There's no mixing of concrete on site or anything like that.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board regarding this application? Danny?
My only question is, is there a reason it had to be in the front of the house?
Yeah. It's wetlands in back, amongst other things, but wetlands is the biggest concern with the back. And there's already a similar room like this in the back, but...
So it's already conforming.
Go ahead.
Is the enclosed area going to be windows? Is it going to be sliders?
Sliding windows. Four skylights. We're probably going to drop it down to two because of losing the initial size. Initially, we were looking at putting four skylights in, but with the reduction in size to meet the 80%, we're probably going to reduce two of those skylights.
Any further questions? I'm going to read the letters. I have a letter from Sheila Joyce, project engineer for the town. "This office has reviewed the project application plans and documents submitted to the DPW on March 28, 2025, for the following public hearing notice on April 3, 2025. Five Morning Glory Circle. Nicholas Warrens requesting a special permit under Section 195.9 conformity for a 20% reduction in the front setback requirement of a 40-foot to build an 11.5-by-14-foot sunroom addition, and other additions seem necessary. As a result of this review, the office has the following comments. The proposed addition will be near or possibly over the existing sewer service. Applicant must contact the DPW Sewer Division to coordinate any necessary action to preserve or alter the sewer service. Erosion control devices must retain the sediment on site. These must be installed prior to any work or earth disturbance. Consideration should be made to install roof-drained drywells to keep the stormwater runoff within the property. This is not a requirement for approval." I have a letter from Conservation regarding the special permit, and they have no concerns due to the location of the addition. Chelmsford Water District has no concerns. The Chelmsford Police Department has no concerns. The Board of Health has no concerns. Fire prevention has no concerns. And there are no concerns from the Treasury Collector. That's the extent of my letters at this time. Unless there's further questions, I'll open this up to the audience for a comment. If anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor or opposition to this application, now is the time. Seeing none...
I'd like to close the meeting for the public meeting for Five Morning Glory, oh, no, sorry. Yeah, Five Morning Glory Drive.
You should say, I should make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to...
Close the hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Second. Second by Peter. All in favor? Unanimous. So I think we can take this up quickly. Doesn't need any concerns as to doing it. It's a special permit, not a variance. And, you know, where they put it in the house is kind of their purview. I'm sure they're looking for the morning or the afternoon sun, whatever their thoughts are with that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Five Morning Glory Drive under Section 195-9 Subsection B for conformity of 20% to the front porch.
Just Morning Glory Circle.
Morning Glory Circle, sorry. No, it says Morning Glory Drive. Drive Glory Circle.
They'll be putting it on somebody else's house.
Okay, you're right.
That's probably happened before. Unfortunately, not at last.
Second by Peter.
Roof jobs have happened like that before.
Unanimous. Good luck with it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So we do not need Stephen to proceed as well.
I think Morning Glory Drive Circle.
Are you up on the mullen?
Did you submit it to the clerk?
It's in the clerk's file. You stamped it in there. Yeah. It's definitely there.
Clerk has it, right?
And I have, I definitely took a copy today because I know I was late on getting it, but I remembered this, I was like, oh crap.
So she could give it to you this evening and it wouldn't be a problem?
Yeah, if it's with the clerk, yeah.
It's definitely with clerk. And they stamped it. I have it stamped in the copy, too.
Our next public hearing is continued. Morose Avenue. Cobblestone Five LLC is requesting a comprehensive permit 40B pursuant to Master of the Laws, Chapter 40B. The project proposes to construct five rental unions, of which four will be duplexes. And so this is still, let's still correct. And one will be a single structure, but not a second floor. Project located in the residential RA district. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Sorry to miss the last meeting. For the record, attorney Melissa Robbins from Farrelly Robbins. Also with me tonight is Katie Enright from Howard Stein Hudson, Casey Ferrero from Howard Stein Hudson, and Larry Gagnon, who is the applicant. As you stated, we're here tonight for our continued public hearing, and we don't have a lot of new information. We made a very minor change to the site plan, which shows a sewer detail that was, had to be revised due to one of the outstanding comments, so that has been made. No other changes have been made to the site plan whatsoever. I know that there are some new comments in the file and a draft decision. Most of the comments are, I think all of the comments were nothing that we needed to respond to. They were non-responsive comments, but they did see that the North Chelmsford Water District had a comment in there about DEP. I just want to remind the board that we have to comply with DEP. We cannot ask for waivers from state regulations, so should DEP come down with an order, we would have to comply. And the board can't waive any of that. Other than that, we have nothing new to submit, but we're happy to answer any questions the board may have or go through the decision.
Okay. Are there any questions, most of the board? Seeing none, I think we could pull up the draft decision and start reviewing that a little bit. Oh, okay. Let's just, I'll work from there.
Each of you have a hard copy in front of you.
Everyone should have a hard copy. Take a minute and look through this. I don't know if you could...
I just noticed a typo. Number two, I think it should be 2020, September 5, 2024.
2024.
Does feel like it's been going on.
It might say, I don't know if we want to put, like, oh, I said, November, March 7, 2024 meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, Alex, where was it?
Sorry, number two, it should be September 5, 2024.
And then November 7, 2024.
What was the second one?
November 7 on the same line, the same number two. Should have it 2024. And then March 6 would be '25, which is right, and April 3 would be '25, which is right. Everybody's checking every date.
As people are going through, this mirrors the typical boilerplate decision that we've used over the years. Middle of the decision talks about conditions, there's some post-approval submission conditions related to final plans, final details that are administratively handled. Section D, construction completion, certificate of occupancy. What you won't find in this decision is a lot of special conditions. That's primarily due to the fact that the limited scope and scale of the project compared to other 40Bs, the plans are rather detailed. Landscaping, buffering, screening, lighting, all of that was covered in either the plans or the modified plans per the public hearing discussions. And then the final couple pages are the codification of the waivers that were originally requested. And what was, several you've granted already and several would be codified as part of the vote.
The only thing I really saw that stood out is that it will be on sewer due to the waiver granted.
Question about, is there a requirement of a pre-construction meeting? Or is that not, you don't put that as a condition?
I believe it's in here. It's, I believe it's mentioned in the DPW comments, the letters.
Oh, it's in the letter, okay. So it's not a condition.
Yeah, it's E1.
E1?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
If it's approved tonight, when do you expect it will be ready for occupancy?
Mr. Chair, if I may. So after the comprehensive permit is actually approved, we have to go back to the state for something called the final approval process. So 20 days following the entry of this decision to the clerk, if approved, we go back to mass housing. That's when we actually draft the regulatory documents, get our actual commitment letter from our lender, and finalize our lottery plan for the affordable unit. After all that is approved and recorded at the registered deeds, that usually takes about 90 days. Construction usually commences about 60 days following that. So we're looking about, Larry doesn't want to hear this, but we're talking about probably four to five months before we actually start substantial construction. Completed. It's a pretty quick construction timeline, once we get a shovel in the ground.
Then Evan, am I correct in that we will still be quite a ways from achieving a 10%?
No, we're right at the cusp.
But we're still waiting for David's choice project.
No, no. We are short nine units right now.
Not counting these five. This is only one in here.
No, no, five.
Are the whole five will count?
We're nine short. We're within grasp. You know, within, depending on what happens this evening, within a week or two, we'll be submitting all the paperwork necessary to be in compliance.
And Mr. Chair, just for clarification, your counsel can clarify this as well, but once this decision is actually entered with the clerk, you can get these decisions counted on the inventory, and they stay on your inventory as long as we start construction within a year.
So Evan, again, you said there was five, and according to the notes here, it says 32?
This project is five, five units.
Right. But how many do we need? Nine? We need nine?
Yeah.
Four.
Can you explain on page, well, I guess it's page three, the bottom of it, how that interprets against what you're saying?
Yeah, you're referring to an email that I sent to a resident.
Yeah, from Maureen Paulson.
Yeah. So I provided her that information. That was back in November of '24. At that time, we were 32 short. Since then, the eight units at Three Meeting House have been added to the 10%. Five units at Dalton Road were added. We are in the process of adding, submitting the six units at UMass West Tremo Crow next week. And depending on how this one goes, we'll be in a position to add the five for this project. And the new SHI, the new SHI that was issued had some additional group homes, group homes that were added to the inventory. There's the delta right there.
Well, that's good news.
It's great. So we're within grasp.
So if the choice units had come forward sooner...
Yeah. If the choice units had come in when we initially anticipated, three, four years ago, we never would have fallen below 10%.
And the project in front of us now wouldn't be there.
Not only this one, but the others that have been submitted to the town, in which the select board has provided comments to HLC on behalf of the town, which are, both of them have received site approval letters, so they're free and clear to submit to the zoning board at any time.
So timing is everything.
Mm-hmm.
Further questions regarding the draft decision?
Draft seems good.
I did receive from your letter that was in your packet, an email this afternoon that comes when I'm on the agenda.
I have a letter from Maureen Paulson dated April 3, 2025. "As it will not be available to attend tonight's ZBA meeting, I just want to express my continued concerns with the proposed project. While understand the ZBA's limitation with respect to this being a 40B project, there still remains the issue that was previous, has been proposed for a single-family home to be built on this plot of land at that time. The town of Chelmsford denied the request, noting the lot was considered unbuildable. It begs the question how an unbuildable lot can suddenly become buildable for not a single-family home, but a project encompassing multiple structures with five units of residences. The neighborhood itself is made up of single-family homes, with the exception of, I believe, one property that had an in-law-style apartment added onto the house. Having a project of this magnitude does not fit the neighborhood. At most, if the lot is now considered buildable, it should only encompass a single-family home or duplex at most. While it's explained at the previous ZBA meeting as to why the board felt it necessary to approve the two waiver requests for the project, I think that serves as an example of 40B being used to bypass a prior decision made by the town for the designation of an unbuildable lot. I respect the decision as made in order to maintain control of the project at the town level, instead of denying it and then going to the housing court, where the town loses the ability to negotiate on the size or scope of the project. It should be taken into consideration that, at the very least, the size and scope of the project should be downsized. There are other 40B projects that are proposed in the pipeline that will more, provide more than enough units of affordable housing, that it seems this project isn't necessary to meet that demand. This is based on an email that I received from Evan on or about 11:14, 2024, in which he advised the following. "The town is currently at 9.78%. This equals 1,438 of the total 14,696 housing units based upon the 2020 census. This is 32 units short of reaching 10%. Previously approved projects that are in the process of being submitted for inclusion are Three Meeting House, eight new units to be submitted next week, UMW TCR, six new units to be submitted by the end of the calendar year, and UMW Choice, 48 new units to be submitted next year. 75 Dalton, five units, no timetable. 61 Carlisle, five units, no timetable. Thank you again for your consideration. Maureen Paulson, 23 Edgeline Avenue." So again, the statement that timing is everything is very accurate in this case. The applicant has a right to apply for it, and he is in the pipeline as of now. So as of now, we are not compliant. We are close. We would like to be compliant. I understand the neighborhood is not in favor of adding to the density of it. I just can only tell you that we've tried our hardest to accommodate the neighbors, reducing the height of the buildings, insisting on sewer as opposed to septic, and trying to keep stormwater manageable on-site. So I'd like to tell you we've done our best. The project is, it stands on its own merits. If it's denied, we'll go to the court, to the housing court, and they will decide if any or all of the applications and the adjustments made are necessary. They could say you don't need to use sewer. You can add units. It's wide open. So we are doing our best to protect the town and obey the law.
Thanks, Brian. I agree with you 100%. The only thing is, I wanted to say on the letter you just read, there's one sentence in there that tells you the whole story, and it is, "I think that serves as an example of 40B being used to bypass a prior decision made by the town for the designation of an unbuildable lot." And that's what this is all about, you know, plain and simple, in my mind.
But it is, they're right.
They're right, exactly.
Would anyone like to speak in favor or opposition to this? I think we believe we're going to take a vote a little later this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
It'll be short and not technical tonight, okay?
Excellent, excellent.
All right. First, I want to start...
Can I get your name and address for the record?
Of course. I should know this by, Cindy Lizinski, 20 Edgeline Avenue.
Thank you.
"Good stewardship is the responsible and careful management of resources that are entrusted to one's care, emphasizing wise use and accountability. First, I'd like to thank the board for your time throughout this process. I appreciate your commitment, and I'm very grateful that I've had the opportunity to come up here and express some of my concerns regarding this project. The decision the board makes matters, not just to one, but to the thousands of residents who rely on your good stewardship. A lot of hard work has gone into groundwater protection, Safe Drinking Water Act on a federal level, Mass DEP on a state level, and as a town, we've adopted these safeguards and implemented a lot of our own as well, and we are on the cusp of losing them. I ask the board to honor and enforce these protections we have in place. It was never the intent of Mass 40B to contribute to the degradation of groundwater quality, but a high percentage of impervious and 14 vehicles leaking oil and gasoline is never an appropriate answer to proper groundwater protection. No one should ever have the right to waive a Board of Health document that was created specifically to protect our groundwater. It is clear the authors of 40B have little understanding of source water protection. No one should ever have the right to build on an aquifer, a designated Mass DEP Zone 2 wellhead protection zone. Good stewardship is everyone's responsibility, and I hope that message will be heard up on Beacon Hill. Thank you so much for your time."
Thank you.
I appreciate it. May I? I have one, so I'll give that to you for the public record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other, uh, statements.
Um, the departmental letters I had uploaded onto the agenda for everyone to see from the revised plans. The only thing is the D P W letter, the web link was a mistake. What got put on the agenda was actually a copy of the previous public hearing. So in the packets in front of you, I had a hard copy made of the D P W letter.
Uh, this is the only one that's changed, right? Yeah, I'll read this in. Sewer comments. Per the town sewer capacity restriction policy, a sewer lateral is limited to an increase of five hundred G P D gallons per day. There's an ability for development to purchase additional capacity, however, that capacity is limited to commercial and municipal needs. There is no sewer connection at Morose Avenue, parcel twenty-five, five-nine, three-oh. Per the sewer capacity credit transfer policy, the residential properties are not eligible to provide sewer credits. Our previous comments still remain valid. If the variance has been granted outside of the D P W authority, then this is an unprecedented circumstance. D P W's understanding is a sewer credit, one-to-one, fee must be paid prior to the certificate of occupancy. The fee is thirty-five dollars per gallon at two-point-two-to-one ratio for the placement through one-one. Uh, one-one would be thirty-five dollars per gallon. Two-to-one is sixteen hundred and fifty gallons per day, fifteen bedrooms. So that pretty much exceeds our, our request anyways. Based on Title V wastewater flow rates, the anticipated maximum daily wastewater flow from this property is sixteen hundred and fifty gallons per day, five units times three bedrooms times a hundred and ten gallons per day. The property would connect to the existing eight-inch polyvinyl chloride PVC sewer on Morose Avenue. The existing sewer on Morose Avenue is attributable to the existing eight-inch PVC sewer on the Richardson Road, and ultimately flows to the Richardson Road Pump Station located on Richardson Road. The Richardson Road Pump Station conveys wastewater from the pump station via six-inch ductile iron, D I force main, into the existing eight-inch PVC sewer in the Highland Avenue near house number forty-two. Richardson Road Pump Station was originally built in nineteen eighty-nine. The town has evaluated the sewer flow of the sewer mains in Morose Ave. And the contributing sewer flow to Richardson Road Pump Station. The proposed flow does not show any adverse impacts to the Richardson Road Pump Station. That is the extent of the new letter from the Department of Public Works. Yes, go ahead.
Just have a question for Evan. Of the additional twenty-five units to, uh, get to, uh, compliance, do any of these run and require us to get involved with sewer verse?
Any, any forty-B that comes to you moving forward, you'll have to, um, be involved with the same issue.
I'm assuming so, not tonight. I'm, I'm sorry. So, so it sounds like it's something we're gonna have to deal with for the additional forty-Bs, which hopefully we don't have two anymore coming in front of us.
Well, according to Evan, they will be coming in front of us.
We, we have additional ones in the pipeline?
All of these that are listed on the sheet will be coming to us.
No, no, none of those will be coming to you.
Oh, none of them?
No. There are-
They're all septic?
There are several projects, there are several potential forty-B projects that have gone through the initial step before it gets to you. They are free and clear at this point to submit to you anytime they want to.
But they haven't as of yet.
Correct.
So it's almost a precedent.
Well, I, I, I think that we spent a lot of time trying to decide whether we were okay with sewer or septic, and, and certainly from a neighborhood standpoint, the septic was unacceptable. So I, I think that by going to sewer, we, we've done the best we can for the project. I, uh, I'm not sure what the town's gonna do about capacity. I, you know, I heard that Lowell put a hundred million into, uh, separating their wastewater and their sewer water. Uh, maybe that goes far enough to open up some capacity. I, I really don't know the politics of that at all. But I know that Lowell has an enormous amount of stormwater that enters the sewer system. And that's when it floods every time it rains, is, this is stormwater coming in there that shouldn't be processed through Duck Island, so if that can get repaired a little, I think the capacity may open up for the town. I don't know. I think, uh, if everyone is comfortable with the draft review, we can close the public hearing and take a vote. Anything else, uh?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Would anyone like to make a motion to close?
I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing on Morose Ave.
Whatever, Danny.
Do we, do we want to exp- uh, expound on that an address and?
Morose Ave, Chelmsford House.
It was just to close the public hearing.
It was in the close.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Danny.
Oh, in favor? I di- I didn't even hear Danny. There you go.
Can I just? This, the, the protection of the Zone Two aquifer and the removing and adding, the removing of the disturbing of the ground and removing, adding of the asphalt and the impacting it's gonna have, like, where, I, I get the forty-B rate, but don't we, having known that this is in a high aquifer zone, right, this property, right? Doesn't that give us a, a, a way to look at the impact it will play adding, removing and disturbing all that ground, adding all this asphalt, and potentially impacting in a negative way our, our water resource? I mean, I get any, any choice we make, if we deny, can be appealed at, at, at the state level, but would it not be a viable argument considering its classification in the aquifer and the level of change and manipulation of current natural ground to new proposed?
Well, it's an interesting question. I think that all the engineering that has been done says that this can be done to state standards. Uh, if Katie wanted to expound on that, I-
Should I take my motion back?
They closed the hearings.
Should I take my motion back to close the public hearing?
Can't.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, but, I mean, I've, I've heard, I've heard, again, and, and I've heard that- I've heard that all the engineering says that it would comply with regulations. I, I get that, but-
That, that is everything. I mean, that is what it says. They're complying with the requirements. They're not getting a waiver on being in the aquifer district, District Two. There's no, we didn't make any waiver for that or adjustment for it. I mean, there are, are there forty homes in the neighborhood right now that have been there for fifty years? I think all of them closer to the aquifer than the Morose site. I, I'm not, uh, trying to make light of it, but it's, the construction, I think, is gonna be, be done, and there'll be some disturbance. But once that's complete, the, the stormwater should improve on the whole street. I mean, anything that enters that site is gonna stay on that site and be treated on that site. That's, that's what they spent an awful lot of time and effort to ensure. The town has reviewed it. The, uh, the engineers of the town agree that it's, it's to the state, federal, and, and local requirements. I mean, we've looked at that, and, and I believe they've complied. They, uh, obviously gonna have to put that into action, but that's reviewed as well. It's inspected. It's, I mean, what they're doing should improve that space, and I, I believe that's the case. I, I don't, I don't know. It's a, that's-
And I, I think there's no implicat- like, just because there's construction going on in an aquifer, that is allowed. We, we see that all across Massachusetts. It's, is there any hazardous materials that would get within that groundwater? And based on all the information we know, there is not any hazardous materials that would get into the groundwater. The stormwater is meeting all the ten stormwater standards, so I don't see a something that would show that there would be an adverse impact going into the aquifer Protection District.
I, I don't believe we're putting the aquifer at risk. You could certainly say you're adding to the stresses that are there. And I, I think that's an unfortunate reality. I, I mean-
And the non-build, the non-buildable classification prior to is because of size, not?
The zoning.
Okay.
It wasn't zoned a lot ever. I think it was the proximity to Route Three, actually, that, uh-
It applied for a variance a number of years ago. The board did not grant those variances to make it a buildable lot.
But it had more to do with size and such, not aquifer?
I, I don't think, uh-
No, nothing to do with that.
Okay. Okay.
It was frontage of the lot. It couldn't qualify as a rear lot because it was too small, and it didn't have the frontage to be-
Yeah, it didn't qualify mostly because of square footage. It had to be sixty thousand.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay. I just wanted to confirm.
Sixty or forty?
Sixty.
R A.
It's R A is sixty, R B is forty.
Before you end deliberation, can you just review who's, who's voting?
I can. It's gonna be myself, Jamie, Charlie, Peter, and Danny. Is that correct? And Glenn. Yep. Steve is not here, and he will not be joining us.
Danny's not voting.
Oh, you're not voting, I thought. Oh.
He was the alternate for Jamie, but Jamie just submitted the mullin affidavit.
Oh, gotcha.
That's why.
Okay.
And Stephen was not eligible to vote because he missed two hearings.
Okay.
Would someone like to make a motion? I think we can move this ahead.
Um, I'll make a motion, but I just wanted to say that this, um, this is the first time I made a motion to approve a forty-B. I usually deny them, but this time it's bar. I make a motion to approve the forty-B, Monroe Ave, um, requesting the permit forty-B pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter forty-B. Um, this project comprises of five rental units, four of which will be duplexes and one a single-family. This property being located at the R A District, parcel ID map twenty-five, block fifty-nine, lot thirty, and consists of approximately one point zero five acres. And I'd like to make note of all the letters right into record that shall be, um, followed.
Gonna get a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Peter. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a supermajority.
That's a supermajority. Four-one.
Wrong. You're wrong.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for talking.
Good luck with everything. Okay. Take care, everyone. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you making it. I know it was a trick today. It'll be every day.
Excellent.
Good luck.
Yes, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So, okay. Jackie, before we leave, could you have, uh, Brian, just sign the signature sheet?
I have the, um, signature sheets for-
Myself or, or all the voters?
Just you.
Okay.
Just you, and then we'll, we'll get it in tomorrow.
You're on the hook.
It's on the first page.
Right, right.
Just have him sign the signature page.
Yep, that's what I'm getting at.
But it's a very difficult thing, and, and I don't, I don't take it lightly, but you think we did our best, so.
He's worried the guy kicked up, and then he lost everything. He made improvements on him.
The board voted affirmative.
It's not.
The board voted, oh, uh, four-one.
Oh, nice.
I didn't know what they were looking for.
Yeah, like your first, your first national.
Yeah, it was my first one. I was-
Yeah, it was usually good events.
Yeah, there was a good one on, like, parking.
And then we, we're, 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 right now, that's right there.
Yep.
Couple of them.
Trying to figure out how we deal with that right now.
Oh, this is, so I didn't even have to come to you.
Do we get rid of it sometimes?
Sleeping.
And I'm just like, I, like, I don't know. Do we do that? Do we not do that? Or do we just, like, go slowly, like, reduce it slowly and then see how it does?
Huh?
You don't have a ridiculous lot?
Yeah.
I mean, I've read through all of it, and I just, I just don't know. Somebody from the state legislature can't go like, let's draft. I know we tried.
A lot of work went into it, that's for sure.
Whatever their representative is, but it's just the dumbest thing ever.
We're trying to-
Put on an offering, write to that dirt road. Keep and put berries up to the-
Our next hearing is Ledge Road. Uh, owner, Ledge Road Realty Trust Holdings. We have a request for a continuation to June twenty-fifth. Before I get a motion for that.
Make a motion to me.
June fifth, twenty-twenty, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to-
I, I just think that Charlie wanted to speak on this a, a moment before we, uh-
I just want to go down on the record saying that, um, that we really need Newport here. Um, we're missing them for two, two months. That's, that's not very good in my mind because the people are not chalced to go into this truck traffic that they should not be going through. And, um, even if they are doing anything, no matter what they're doing, they should be here telling us what they're doing so that, um, people of not chalced have, uh, less truck traffic. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Glenn?
You know, if, if Newport is coming to the meeting, someone from Westwood should come to the meeting. It gives some history to this. I was on the Board of Selectmen when this first came about. And Westwood was basically saying, you know, Chelmsford was trying to get something done in advance, not waiting to the end. Now we're coming down to really the end. And they basically ignored us. And, uh, you know, I think that in some ways, the rapport between Chelmsford and Westwood has been irreparably compromised.
Strained, for sure.
Over this whole issue. And I also like to say that I went over there again. I, I visited the site back when I was on the Board of Selectmen. And I went back over there to look at it again. And I met with one of the individuals who gave a presentation on the second of January. And he indicated that they had planned to have a hundred and twenty-five people here tonight. And that maybe we need to look at a different venue for that meeting, if that amount of people is gonna show up.
Uh, people in opposition to this. So, uh, I think that's a consideration. Uh, Evan, I don't know what else is available, whether we should look at a school or-
Um, we can certainly do that, and we can find an al- an alternate location.
There's a police station.
The, um, it needs to be a location in which telemedia can reasonably accommodate the live broadcast. So the senior center
Oh, that's a thought.
is, is, is a good option. It requires telemedia to do a, uh, at least a full-day setup, so it's, it's a significant, um, undertaking. Did we advertise any new public hearings for June fifth yet?
Not yet.
Okay. All right, so we will, we'll find a, uh, an alternative for, for June fifth. We have plenty of time.
I don't know if you'll be in contact. I'd say that we really would like them to, uh, appear on June fifth as well.
Yeah, so just, just to clarify, as you recall, at the last meeting, the board had requested that, um, the applicant meet with the town. That's exactly, that's exactly what's been going on since your last meeting. So, so Newport's legally required to submit the request for continuance.
Yep.
But my understanding is the, the, the request is because Newport and the town continue, continue to have discussions.
And, and some, some solution is- Hopefully, Westford and, and some, some solution is presented itself.
I think that's all being discussed.
Can I, do we know if it's just Newport, or is it all three?
I'm not, I'm not in the meeting, so I don't know the details.
Graves, the.
Graves, Graves.
Graves.
I don't, I don't know who's, who's in the meetings, and I don't know what's specifically being discussed.
And it's no longer really Newport. It's their new owners for a multi-billion dollar worldwide company.
They're huge, massive company.
My suggestion is, you know, just, just grant the continuance this evening. I wouldn't do any much, you know, much more talking.
But we are, yeah, okay.
I make a motion to grant the continuance for the Ledge Road, Ledge Road until June fifth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second with, with a location to be determined.
With new location to be determined to accommodate the anticipated attendance.
Seconded by Peter. We're, we're not, we're not taking comment at this time, because we do not actually have an open meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
They've requested a continuance, so we cannot take any testimony.
That's a great suggestion to town hall, because that is that region.
Yes, sir. No, I think it's, it's worth paying attention to when. Senior Center.
Senior Center.
Yep.
Good decision.
Could I please just see the show of hands again, so I know who voted what? So five, and?
To continue.
And is that a, a no or abstained?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understood the vote.
I didn't catch that, so.
One, two, three, four, five, five to one.
Five to one.
Thank you, Charlie. I just want to make sure I got your vote.
Can I vote on the continuation, Becky?
Yep.
Can I vote on the continuation? Because you had indicated I couldn't vote on it.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
I think the continuation's.
Since there's no testimony, right?
Yes, there's no testimony.
Um, but I can change that to four one. That's, that's a good point. I'll put that you abstained because you weren't here last.
We'll get it right.
Thank you for reminding me.
Do we have minutes? Does anybody have a chance to review the meeting minutes from nine, five, twenty-four?
Yeah, those had never actually been approved. I went back and looked. So those were still lingering. I'm not sure if they were continued at one of the other meetings, but we still have the Septembers, and both the September and then the February ones were on the agenda last month, but the board opted to postpone.
We've mentioned that.
Yeah, because it was, it was a long meeting.
And then the, the ones highlighted in green are the new ones from last month. In the printout, you can't, yeah, on the computer.
So we have February and January?
March sixth.
Oh, okay. Okay, sure, of course. Could I ask for a motion to approve the September fifth minutes, two thousand twenty-four?
So moved.
Danny, second?
Second.
Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve, I should have done an N-Mouse, the February sixth, twenty twenty-five Z B A minutes? Second, motion by Danny, second by Glenn.
By Glenn.
Yeah, he was just a hair quicker than.
Well, Peter, you weren't here for that.
Yeah, Peter, you weren't here, so you can't. There we go.
All in favor?
February.
I don't, I don't think, I think it was just, so it's just Steve, Jamie, Glenn, Rod, and me.
Yeah, okay. I was at all three. It was the September.
I was just about to go check to make sure on that, too.
No, it was the November one that I missed.
That was March.
And that's what messed me up on Morose, because they started in September, and that's the one I saw.
Could I get a motion to approve the March sixth minutes, twenty twenty, twenty-five? Motion by Danny, second?
Pass, I'll second.
Peter's quick this time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Charlie keeps me guessing, I gotta keep thinking.
That's your job.
Could I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Yep.
Thank you very much. It was a tough one.